All right, it's six o'clock. Regular meeting start. City Attorney may have anything back from closed session.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No, the council did convene in closed session to discuss one matter of existing litigation, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may I have your roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
We can have silent prayer and flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next agenda item, F, Agenda Approval Addition and Deletion. Any council member wants to add addition or deletion to the meeting? Thank you. Madam Clerk, may I have a replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Saturday, September 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, September 10th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, staff, and audience. I'm here today to recognize Sacramento Sikh Temple. I would like to welcome and thank you Sacramento, West Sacramento Temple. They did a very generous donation on our local fundraising, Hermindar Singhar Award. And there is some very well-known, hard-working Board of Directors is coming from Sacramento. I would like to invite them to the podium. President Balwirt Singh Thilong, President of Sacramento Sep, can you come to the podium, please? Darshan Singh Mundi, Public Relation Officer Sacramento Sik. Sarjit Singh Thilong, Board of Director Sacramento Sikh Temple. And Narendra Singh Thandi is also, there is connection between Charter School and the Sikh Temple, so he's a president of that school. Thank you very much, you guys get your time to coming there. I'm on the behalf of whole council, we would like to present issue a proclamation. A proclamation by the City of Galt, California honoring the Sikh Temple of Sacramento. Whereas Sikhism originated in the Punjab region northwest India five century ago, and today there are approximately 25 million Sikhs worldwide, making it the world's fifth-largest religion. And whereas Sikh American constitute a well-established religious, social, and ethical group among the people who have immigrated to California and to the United States of America. And whereas the Sikh Temple of Sacramento, 2301 Evergreen Road, West Sacramento, was served as a place of worship for the majority of Sikh population residing in the greater Sacramento area. Came into existing in October 1981. And whereas Sikh immigrants have added to the American culture and continue to maintain their own culture and tradition. And whereas the Sikh Temple of Sacramento has generously donated $11,000 to the Hermindar Garhwal Memorial. Therefore be it nor so that the City of Council of City of Galt, California comments and recognizes the Sikh Temple of Sacramento for the generous donation of $11,000 to the Hermindar Singh Garhwal Memorial. Again, I would like to thank you, everybody, especially this temple, these peoples working hard, these people giving back to the community. Thank you for all. And now I would like to ask if anybody want to speak a couple minute or give a statement? If you want to give to speak first, then just a few minutes.
Let me put on my eyes, you know, so I can read without. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thanks for giving us, inviting, giving us time to speak behalf of the congregation of West Sacramento Gurdwarah Sikh Temple. Ladies and gentlemen, friends and family honored guests, today we gather to mourn the loss of true hero Police Officer Hermindar Garhwal. Officer Garhwal paid the ultimate sacrifice while serving in the line of duty. And our hearts are heavy with grief as we remember his life and legacy. Our deepest condolences go out to Officer Garhwal's family, friends, and loved ones during this difficult time. Hermindar Garhwal, like countless other officer, police officer, embodied bravery, courage, selfness, and an unwavering passion for upholding law and order. His dedication to our communities was evident in every action he took while wearing the badge. He was a role model who represented the very best of our law enforcement community. I stand before you today not just as your speaker, but as someone who spent a decade working to pass that legislation in California, breaking down barriers to individuals like Hermindar Garhwal, who belong to the Sikh faith, could serve in law enforcement while wearing the religious turban like us with pride. Hermindar accomplished made us immensely proud. The Sikh community in California, across the nation, is deeply honored to have individuals like Hermindar who choose to protect and serve. He proved that diversity in law enforcement makes us stronger and open doors to others to follow. Today, we remember Hermindar Garhwal as a hero, not just because he was a Sikh police officer, but because, like all our brave men and women in law enforcement, he was a hero. He willingly put himself in harm's way to protect us and uphold the principles that form bedrock of our society. The Sikh community is historically known as a warrior class, recognizes that there are no greater warriors than the men and women in uniform who tirelessly stand between us and danger. We look up to them as examples of strength, and we are inspired by their unwavering commitment to justice. In closing, let us remember Officer Hermindar Garhwal for the hero that he was, a dedicated public servant, a loving family member, and a cherished friend. May his memory be a beacon of hope, reminding us all of the selfless sacrifice made by those who wear the badges. Before I conclude, I am honored to announce that Sikh Temple Sacramento is donating $11,000 for Hermindar Garhwal's memorial. This generous contribution reflects the deep respect and love our community holds for Hermindar and his service. In the face of this tragedy, let us also remember that Hermindar Garhwal's sacrifice serves as a powerful reminder that our law enforcement officers put their lives on the line every day, not just for themselves, but for us all. As we reflect on his life and legacy, let us be moved by the immense courage and dedication that he and his fellow officer display, ensuring that our communities remain safe, secure, and just thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Mundi. Thank you for the statement you make. Now I see the Garhwal families here, and for a picture, I also like to request for the council member, if we can come down and take one picture so we can present that proclamation. Thank you. The next agenda item is Beautification Committee Annual Report for Physical Year 2022 and 2023. So that's Craig Hopman or who's?
Waiting for Amy. Well, good evening. I'm Paige Lamson.
I'm Candy Del Grande.
I'm Amy Sandu.
So we are three of your beautification members. Gail Weber was going to be here this evening. She had about a 45-minute PowerPoint for you guys, but unfortunately she has COVID, so I will be giving a little short one. Okay. So we are the Beautification Committee. Gail is the chair, and it is our pleasure to present the council with the Beautification Committee Annual Report for the Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023. This report outlines the committee's responsibilities and activities. So the Beautification Committee's mission is to enhance, restore, and beautify the City of Galt by advocating a high standard of community involvement, cleanliness, maintenance, and attractiveness. The purpose and function of the Beautification Committee is to act as an advisory committee to the City Council and make recommendations on projects designed to maintain and improve the appearance of public areas within the city. This year, we focused on consistent road and area cleanups. We did that in conjunction with the Youth Commission, so once a month we would have a little cleanup unless there was a tornado or hurricane. So we also do Home of the Month and Business of the Month, where we acknowledge homes with beautiful landscaping and businesses that have made wonderful changes and really upped their ante in their outside. So the email created last year by anyone can submit notifications and nominate their neighbor or business. It's been active, and a few citizens have been nominating. We'd like to thank our committee members, and that concludes our report to the City Council. And we'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve the community and provide this report. Any questions?
Thank you, Paige Lamson, and all the members of the Beautification Committee, including Craig Hopman, he's in charge of that committee. Councilmember, any comment on that?
Yeah, just, you know how much I care about keeping Galt clean, so the Beautification Committee, although some people think just a trivial commission, I think is so important, and I appreciate all that you guys do, and I appreciate all that, you know, you guys working with people like the Youth Commission to keep the monthly cleanups going. And so if there's ever anything that the council can do to help your efforts be more successful, just please let us know. So thank you, guys, and pass our thanks on to Gail.
Thank you. We are looking to get some T-shirts for the children that help us. We do wear vests. If you see us out there cleaning up, that way they can have a little "I helped keep the city beautiful" T-shirt, so we're working on those. Anybody else?
Thank you. If nobody, no comment, then I'm going to move forward. Commission on Aging Annual Report for Physical Year 2022 and 2023.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Sandu and council. I'll be calling up Libby Robbins, Vice Chair of the Commission on Aging, to give the report today.
My name is Libby Robbins, as Director Solis explained, and I am on the Commission for Aging. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening and share what our Commission on Aging has been up to this last fiscal year. As you know, the purpose of the Commission is to act as a forum and advocate for all matters of concern to senior citizens of our city. You were given a report that shows you just a snapshot of what we've done each meeting during this past year, but I'd like to highlight a few things that we've done this past year. The Commission submitted to the City Council last year a request to change our bylaws to include the word advocacy for seniors. In May of 2023, you, the council, approved the words, those changes accordingly. We hope that we have applied this word appropriately with the tasks that we have accomplished this year. Before July 2022, the social activities of our seniors were very limited due to COVID. In-person gatherings were restricted, Meals on Wheels Cafe had closed down, the Chibola Center continued to be shut down, and the Senior Club became non-operational. The Galt Senior Resource Center had opened in June but was still only operating virtually. In June of 2022, the COA was asked by Director Solis with Parks and Recreation to sponsor Senior Bingo until the Galt Senior Club was able to resume activities. Excuse me. We gladly took on that task with the help of Betty Walsh from the Senior Club, as well as many local businesses, providing gift prizes, gift cards, and food for our endeavor. On September 12th, 2022, we hosted our first Senior Bingo and kicked it off with an ice cream sundae party generously donated by Velvet Grill and Creamery. Bingo is held weekly on Mondays from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Chibola Center. Currently, we have on average 65 to 70 seniors joining us every week. The Commission on Aging provides prizes for each game, as well as a blackout prize and raffle prizes. We've been fortunate enough to get some donations from local businesses and purchase, and we purchased the rest of the prizes that we need within the community of Galt as much as we can, so that we can support local businesses as well. Denny's continues to be one of our biggest supporters, matching us 100% on gift cards. We estimate, though, that the cost for Bingo is a huge percentage of our budget. This past year, members of the Commission on Aging also met with the Chief of Police after offering to collaborate with the department on senior matters, including the Senior Identification Program instituted by the Galt PD. Other members of the COA continue to work with the Chamber of Combers so that our services are known within the community. The Commission continues to find more social activities for seniors. The Galt Senior Resource Center has opened a game day on Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Chibola Center, where seniors can come and play a multitude of games that they have collected. We are also in talks with several casinos to organize a day trip for seniors. The Galt Senior Resource Center also reopened their doors to foot traffic on September 12th as well. We currently have approximately 12 to 14 volunteers there under the direction of Lori St. Clair, and it's open on Mondays from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and Tuesdays through Thursdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Commission also approved a small budget specifically for the GSRC supplies and have partnered with Parks and Rec in the City of Galt to have a dedicated phone paid from this budget. We have also been able to connect seniors in need of medical mobility apparatuses such as walkers and scooters, transportation to and from medical appointments, and finding food resources. Low-cost and financial resources continue to be one of our biggest needs for the seniors that have sat services at GSRC. We continue to work with South County Services and the Sunshine Pantry to do what we can to connect seniors with food and services. We've been fortunate enough to have Katie from Golden Outlook Insurance Services come to Bingo and answer insurance questions that seniors have about Medicare, Medicare, and other insurance issues, and she's even brought prizes. We are working with, excuse me, agency on aging Area 4 and more specifically 211 Sacramento to learn and get even more resources for our senior population, and we thank German Aon from 211 Sacramento for attending our monthly meetings and being a resource. We are also so appreciative to our partners at Calways and SMD, as well as other merchants, local and regional, through their generous donations, continue to help the Commission accomplish its mission. Affordable and safe housing continues to be another prevailing senior concern here in Galt. Although we are not a governing body, when community concerns are presented to us, we are confident that when we pass it on to you, you will take it under advisement and act accordingly. We hope to come back to you this time next year with even more news of exciting activities, resources, and opportunities for our Galt seniors. We couldn't do what we do for seniors without the help of Parks and Recreation. Director Solis and Monica Lopez and all of the staff have been invaluable in helping us with all of our activities. We would also like to thank you, the council, and the City of Galt for your continued support on the Commission and of the senior population, and hope that as your confidence grows in our services and activities that we've been able to provide, that our budget may also grow. Thank you again for your time and support.
Thank you, Libby Robbins. This has very good detail in the report, and I also like to thank you, everyone, on the members, Andrea Johnson, Bob Elliot, Phyllis Johnson right here, and Bob Wilson.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would like to ask the council member if they have any comment or any question on that.
I do, yeah. I just want to say thank you to what you guys do. I want to thank yourself, Phyllis, Bob, former Commissioner Andrea Johnson, and of course Bob, our returning alumni. You know, what you guys do, like thinking about what COVID did to the, you know, to the senior community when I went out with Andrea and Meals on Wheels, and I think you were there as well, right? Yeah, so, I mean, just the impact that that had on these people not getting out, and now what did you do with the Bingo and the Game Day, which I wasn't aware of until right now, and all that. I mean, this is just, people don't realize how big that kind of stuff is to the senior community, so it's huge, and I appreciate all that. You guys are, I know, running on a tight, you know, very tight budget. And, you know, this council, you know, we represent the seniors, so I think all of us in our campaigns made that statement that it was important, seniors are important. To me, you guys are the tip of the spear in that effort, so I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Again, thank you. Next agenda item is Public Safety Committee Annual Report for Physical Year 2022, 2023. I think Chief?
There we go. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I would ask our Chair for the Public Safety Committee, Tim Reed, to come forward to the podium, and while he's coming up, I would direct the council to a change I'll ask to be made at the end of the introduction, which still reflects Dana Wilkerson as a public safety liaison, that's in her, it's Wendy Masters. Her email is actually there, we just didn't switch her name, so for clarification, we will get that in the agenda packet properly. Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, or Vice Mayor and other City Council members and everyone else in attendance. My name is Tim Reed. I am the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. As everyone knows, the Public Safety Committee consists of five voting members, plus our wonderful Vice Mayor for attending to those meetings as well. What I'll go over is the purpose and function, a summary of our meetings, and some of the discussion items that we've covered in those meetings. So the purpose and function, the purpose of the Public Safety Committee is to act as an advisory committee to the City Council and to evaluate any public safety issues within the community brought to the committee's attention by the City Council, city staff or residents, and to make recommendations to yourselves, the City Council. The committee shall confine its business to the general public safety issues and shall not engage in any discussions or address any issues that relate to internal operations of the city, including the Police Department. The items discussed by the committee shall include such matters as traffic safety, pedestrian safety, special events, emergency operations plans, and other public safety issues. So in the year 2022, 2023, we had six meetings scheduled. We meet every other month. Out of those six, four were held, two were canceled due to attendance. The top concerns, or the summary of the meetings, discussion items, our tops concerns were obviously traffic safety, more specific, there was generalized traffic safety, and then there was specific school area traffic safety, which was a big concern for all of us on the committee. Other things that we talked about, homelessness, weed abatement, we were able to review the city's emergency operations plan before the chief brought it to you guys for adoption. Then we talked about with the police and the fire department, some concerns about coverage and response times due to the increase in the housing that is being built and the future building on the east side of Galt. The fire department gave us a wonderful presentation about their telemedicine pilot program that they're doing, trying program that they're doing, trying to relieve some of the stress on the local hospitals. And then the flock camera system and a couple of other issues that... I don't really remember what that note was, but it's fine. But we strive to work with the Police Department and the Fire Department and you guys to bring any issues to your guys' attention from all those other agency, or all those other people, and to try to make Galt as safe as it can be. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for giving a good report. Council member, any comment?
Yeah, I always got something to say. Thank you, thank you, Tim. I appreciate it, doing the good work you do. As you know, you know, I miss my days on the Safety Committee. The Chief probably doesn't miss those days, though, because it made for long meetings, but...
Good discussion.
Actually, that was before you were Chief, so it's probably not you that was... But anyways, sincerely, though, I thank you for what you guys do. My one question to you, though, would be, how often do you guys bring something to us and say, this is something we would, you know, you're an advisory board, but how often you actually come to us and say, this is something we've been talking about, and we'd like to bring it to your attention?
To be honest, I've been there for two and a half years now, and we have not brought something to your attention. We've brought things to the chief, to the fire, that's not the fire chief, the police chief's attention, and we've discussed it in the meetings, but we've never come directly to you guys with any concerns.
And I know having him there and him hearing those directly can circumvent maybe the red tape of the process, but you don't, you don't think that would be because of a lack of safety issues, right? I mean...
No, sir.
Yeah. I know that we had a child hit by a school today on a bicycle. I don't know the circumstances of that, but you mentioned the school safety, that's a big topic right now, I've been hearing a lot of, so I would like to see you guys come forward more. I mean, you guys are the sounding board, like I, as you and I have talked, I rely on you to be even more so the eyes and ears of us for you to come to us and say, this is the matters of safety that are of concern in the community, and we'd like to hear more about them, even if it's just a simple, come every couple of months to public, to public comment and say, hey, here's some things that we're talking about, blah, blah. So it doesn't have to be a yearly official update, I'd like to hear from you guys more often, just unofficially, a public comment.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thanks, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Council member Farmer, the questions you're asking, I'm also on, you know, the advisor on the Safety Committee, and that's true, we discuss very deeply things, and this time, I think we discussed with the, all the department heads, with the chief, and most likely they satisfied, but I have no hesitation, if I feel something we need to bring to the council, I will. Thank you, Ray. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, you're one short right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I know the Beautification Committee is also, so for the record, anybody out there listening that wants to or needs to get involved, check with the city clerk. Thanks. And Council Member Farmer, through the Vice Mayor, the next issue we expect to come that we talked about, as you see in the many meeting notes a couple of times, is the homelessness issue, and I think we're coming to council for some decision points about ad hoc committees and different things like that, that help with the policy portion, that we would need support from the council on. So that is the next thing, sort of through public safety that you should see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Next agenda item H, Madam Clerk, may I have a public comments?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. First up, we have Jerry Sauter.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Jerry Sauter, Galt resident. I'm here today to just bring up something that I noticed on my usual driving around the community. I noticed that there was a speed limit change on Walnut Avenue. I usually follow the agenda meetings, minutes, et cetera, and I don't recall that a speed study or a proclamation, whatever they call it, ordinance was put on the agenda. Usually, most jurisdictions bring that before the public, make that announcement, and then our city and Police Department communicate that to the residents, so they're aware. So, kind of caught me off guard, there was nothing mentioned, nothing shared in the city Friday update that we get. And then also concerned that, you know, if that was changed and the speed studies were conducted, we have other traffic issues that have been brought before the council and kind of languished and not gone anywhere. So, kind of interesting that that safety item was done with no fanfare, and some of the other things that community's been asking for is not being done. So, wanted to just bring that to your attention. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask the question, who will be the right person to answer why the speed limit change and when it changed? Mike Selley.
So, yeah, there are, basically, the city, under California statute, well, cities and counties, anybody that sets a speed limit agency, has to have a valid current speed survey, an engineering survey. So we look at more than just speed, we look at the roadway, all the parameters of it. There's data taken, and you have to do it every, technically every five years, but you can extend it an additional five years, so at least every 10 years. And the last time the city updated its speed surveys was, I believe, and I'm going to look at my city engineer, I think's in the audience, I think it was around 2012, so we were basically coming up on that 10-year limit, and we've done, I think there's roughly about 1618, and there were only two changes, and there was a five mile an hour adjustment. So I'm going to look at him, because I don't remember off the top of my head which two segments those were, but I believe the gentleman has noted one of those, so. And he's correct, initially, when you set a speed limit, you bring in ordinance, but it's my understanding, and legal may weigh in on this too, basically because we are essentially reviewing an existing facility, that if there's a change within that five mile an hour, that we do not need to bring an updated ordinance, so to speak, back to council, so. So, I don't know if, John, you want to add anything?
Okay.
Which two was it, John? Was it F Street and...
It's on.
If I recall correctly, F Street went down five miles an hour, Walnut went down five miles an hour, and I think New Hope went up five miles an hour. All the other ones stayed the same, and a number, what we, the findings we had were, even though some speed limits could have been raised, i.e., Corollion, for example, the 85th percentile was approximately 50 miles an hour, we made an engineering judgment to keep it at 45. So there were a number of speeds, limits that could have even been raised higher that we kept where they currently are.
So my only concern, you know, I love to hear the speed limit down those streets in particular, but my only concern would be, and Mr. Sauter did come to me and bring this, and I said, I don't have an answer for you a few days ago, but, I mean, if you're someone that lives in a certain neighborhood and you travel the same street, day in and day out, year after year, and then the speed limit changes, and there's no public notification of that, I mean, I don't know of anybody getting a ticket and saying, hey, I thought it was whatever, so I don't know if that's ever happened so far since this changes, but I think it'd be pretty important for us to know. I mean, I drive F Street every day, I didn't even know that the speed limit went down. I think it's a good thing that it went down, but I just think if something like that happens, especially on high-traveled areas like Walnut and F Street, that maybe just like included in the newsletter, you know, that goes out, or just pay a Facebook post through the PIO or something, I mean, just, you know, like I said, I don't know of any enforcement that's happened, maybe it's an educational approach at first for those streets, but, yeah, so thank you for the explanation, though, John and Mike, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike Selley, any other public comment?
Ryan Montgomery.
I'm going to keep my distance from the mic, my voice is kind of curious, I don't think the mic's necessary. Dear members of the City Council, my name is Ryan Montgomery, and I'm a teacher of 18 years here in Galt. I come before you to raise concerns that many in Galt share with me, the whispers about the possible return of COVID lockdowns and masks during the winter, again, just as campaign season is about to kick into gear. Many in the community of Galt are wondering, what will be your response if Sacramento calls on you yet again to enforce draconian lockdowns and masks that did very little last time? Furthermore, what will be the response of the Chief of Police that you chose? What will you enforce, and will you comply with Sacramento's demands? The people of Galt do not want to go back to these ineffective lockdowns and forced masking. Masks and vaccination should be a personal choice, especially when we saw countless examples of Gavin Newsom and various other politicians not following the science, being maskless in stadiums, restaurants, and not vaccinating their children while heavily pushing us to do so to ours. Their actions during this time reeked of hypocrisy and showed all of us they didn't really believe what they were preaching to us. God is my witness, I hope I am wrong, and I hope that my presence here is unnecessary. However, we cannot go back to such a dark time in our country, where people's freedoms were used for toilet paper, businesses needlessly shut down for good, and severe loss of learning from our children. I prayed with you to represent the people who voted for you and trusted you not to forget your oath, like so many in Sacramento that did. Please choose freedom. The people of Galt would greatly appreciate a discussion between the mayor, the City Council, and the Chief of Police that you hired regarding this matter. Many in the community are concerned. If freedom is no longer safe in Galt, California, it is not safe anywhere in California. The Bill of Rights and the Constitution must be held sacred, otherwise, we are doomed. I love the community of Galt, and I am extremely glad that my wife and I chose to raise our children here. Galt is an amazing place. However, like many people in California that are leaving, we have our breaking point. There comes a time that I must think of getting my children away from this madness. I pray that such a move is not necessary, however, it is very clear that this virus was politicized beyond belief and used to erode our freedoms. It had very little to do with the science. I thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. And you know, these are the public comment, I will ask council member if they want to make any short comment on that. If it's not, then I'm going to move on the next agenda item.
We have more public comments.
Oh.
Kenneth Lee.
My name is Kenneth Lee. I'd like to commend the Aging Commission that does the Bingo card. That's because, as a senior with limited income, I love running those food gift cards to the restaurants. It also stimulates business, too, you know, local business. And I like to bring up senior pedestrian issues. I'd like to see more signage at senior living complexes and painted crosswalks at senior complexes such as Galt Place. And there's been a lot of unmarked tow trucks coming into Galt towing cars away, and they're not, they're not doing repos. So I wanted to find out what's going on with that. And I love the Police Department that has the camera van on loan from Elk Grove in the shopping centers. I hope they're catching the people, you know, breaking into the cars and doing other things. And I like to comment on the trash at the flea market. It's not coming from the public, it is coming from the vendors, because there's no garbage there until they start packing up at the end of the day, and then you see all kinds of garbage from packing, packing supplies and stuff. And basically, I'd like to bring up the, a lot of credit card skimming going on in Galt. EBT cards on us seniors are being skimmed, and they're being used in New York at bars and grills. We can't even use them here for food. So, you know, we like to, because as a senior, we can't afford to have our food stamp cards hacked into. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I thank you for you come every council meeting, and these comments is very important for us. Thank you.
Elizabeth McDaniel.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I just want to give you an update on Galt Place, Galt Senior Place. As he spoke on about the towing of cars, that's a problem, and specifically, my personal vehicle, I don't choose to park it at the apartment complex, because they break into cars, they tow the cars, and they, they steal the cars, and they have cameras, but they don't see anything. So I park it in a public lot, I try to move my car every day, it's not abandoned, for the record, because I've had my car red-tagged a lot, and that's not good. It's specifically when I've spoken with the officer out of my window on the telephone, and his response was, well, I'm going to tag it anyway. I'm like, why? And so I thought, that's pretty weird, considering the apartment complex had begun to start towing. I wouldn't think that law enforcement would be a part of that. An update on the mold in the building, it's still there. I've seen pictures, I've seen videos, I've seen it firsthand, specifically in my toilet, which has gone from bad, bad, to worse, worse. Is it worse or did worse, worse? Well, anyway, now I am literally sitting on a potty chair, you know, doing my do, and then I get up, because they came in some type of way, altered the plumbing. We need code enforcement out there really, really bad. The City of Galt needs to get them out there to really look into all of these issues that we've been bringing before you, council meeting after council meeting. I have to literally take a pot about in the middle of the night, you know, I don't like to look at urine in my toilet, so I'll flush it, but, you know, unfortunately, let's get graphic, yeah, I have to leave it in there because I'm so sleepy and tired, instead of having to pick the pot up, take it off the chair, go to the bathtub, whew, go to the bathtub, pour water in the pot, take the pot and then pour it down the toilet stool, because it won't flush, and you can't even adjust it, because they came into my apartment and did something relevant to that. Aside from just moving it, the, removing the toilet tank or getting me a new toilet, they decide for some other tenants as well to take their money and then start eviction processes. They could take that money and take, and begin to redo all the repairs that are required. Another thing I've had, like when he mentioned EBT cards, I know a senior has had their social security card missing, come up missing in their apartment, their ID, myself, personally, you know, in the state of California, you have to have a real ID, right? Right. Okay, but my birth certificate, huh, you want to hear something weird? It's not only altered, it's altered at the state level. I think that's very, very weird as well. So, let me see here, anything else? Yeah, so I would just like for the City of Galt managers, whomever, that you guys can send the code enforcement out there. It would help us in our plight for justice as well, that this mold should be eradicated from this building. They shouldn't even be allowed to operate here in the City of Galt, the CFI management. I think it's very disgraceful to the seniors, citizens of this city and abroad, for anyone to just sit around, just, just do absolutely nothing concerning mold. Mold can kill you, as I've indicated in prior, at prior councils, one of the tenants, I talked with his relative, and when I found out he had passed, he was next door to me, long story short, he tells me he dies of a yeast infection. Yeast infection? How do you die of a yeast infection? Well, if you have black mold in your toilet, you can die from a yeast infection, black mold yeast, and that's not good. So I just wanted to bring you guys on an update, and hopefully they'll stop towing cars. So I just want to bring you guys on an update, and hopefully they'll stop towing cars, you know, quit red tagging my car, I live there, but I do have an issue with the state of California because I have to get a real ID, and how can you do that when your mom and your daddy's name have been altered? And their birthday, how about that? So this is bigger than just Galt Place, in my opinion. But at the end of the day, we'll just say it's really weird. So, God bless you, and I hope you all can really, really help us there at Galt Place and do something. You know, I could be eating dinner right now. Really, I'm hungry. Long day.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your comment. Thank you.
Annette Coonsey.
Good evening. I brought my granddaughter for a civics lesson, and I have to say, you have all magically lulled her to sleep. I might bring her back more often. So anyways, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here, my name is Annette Coonsey, I'm from the Galt Teen Center, and just as way of background, in last year, during the school year, I had the opportunity to attend a fentanyl awareness presentation at McCaffrey Middle School. It was given to the students. And so after I was there, I thought, wow, this would be really good to bring to the larger community so the parents could see it. And, you know, it's such a critical issue right now, and probably all of our lives have been touched in some way on this issue. So I wanted to invite the council, I wanted to invite the community. It's next week, a week from today, at McCaffrey Middle School from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. There's some very compelling speakers. We're partnering with Arrive Alive California, and they come and do the presentation. The school districts have been phenomenal, both in their communication of this and also in providing the facility to have this presentation. So, again, it's September 12th from 6:00 to 7:30, and we also have some other nonprofits that will be there, like Nar Non and Another Choice, Another Chance. So just wanted to mention that. And then also, I don't know what the protocol is for maybe publishing, posting our flyer on the cities. I know there's probably specific rules, but maybe could see if there's an opportunity to share the flyer there as well, so. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Coonsey, is that put on by the school district?
It's put on by, I'm sorry, is it put on by?
The Fentanyl Awareness Forum, who's doing it?
So it's actually, the Galt Teen Center is working with Arrive Alive, that's a nonprofit. We're having it at the school.
Well, if you can reach out to the city manager, maybe we could, you could discuss with him whether or not we could have the PIO posted or something.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Just reach out to Mr. Heinz.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Coonsey.
Gail.
Hello, my name is Gail Sinsplano, and I live at Galt Place. And I was going to bring up the fact that we have a lot of trash and filth in our building, and it's not healthy. And if I could come up and bring you guys photos that I took?
Yeah, sure.
Also, my friend here, he was, he worked at Galt Place as a maintenance guy, and they knew what car he drove. And they towed his vehicle from the visitor parking outside of the garage gates and took down the visitor parking sign after they did that. And they knew it was his car, and it was daytime when they towed it by this gray tow truck that doesn't have any signs on the side, you know, to tell you who it was that towed it. And also, they quit letting us have the food giveaway, you know, bringing food to our building, which a lot of us rely on, you know, each month. And they took it away, so we don't no longer have food in our building every week, you know, on Wednesdays. So I just hope you guys can do something to help us at Galt Place. Because they're taking away everything and towing our cars, and my car got my gas tank siphoned, and so did another neighbor in the building inside the parking garage because the back gate doesn't close all the time, you know, it's like hit and miss if it's going to close or not. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gail. I have a question. Gail, I have a question. You said there is some cars been get towed. It was in a no parking or?
No, it was in visitor parking that's been there since the building was built. And it's outside the gate area, you know, and there was two spots, you know, on East Street side that said visitor parking. And it was during the day, and his car was parked there, and they towed it.
That's for the private property, right?
Well, yeah, but they knew Terry because he worked there for several months. He was their maintenance man. They knew what he drove, and they towed it anyway. And he was only there for the day. So I just wanted you guys to know.
Thank you, Gail.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was not the police department. That would be a private property to own a contract with a private property owner.
Madison Delbrug.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while. I'm Madison Delbrug with the Galt Chamber of Commerce. Being the biggest business advocacy organization here in Galt, I think we would be remiss to not come up here and speak on behalf of our business and the crime that they've been facing these last few months. I don't know if you guys know, but over the weekend, we had another attempted burglary as well as a break-in. And business owners in our community are super concerned and worried, both members and non-members of the chamber. So I just wanted to come up here and express that. I do want to say, first of all, thank you to the PD. They have done so much to help us educate business owners in our community. A few things that the chamber has done in collaboration with them are a safety and security roundtable that we held in July with the business owners in the Save Mart Plaza, and PD was there, so thank you for that. We also held a lunch and learn at the police department in the community room in August on the 17th, and we had several business owners attend that, where the PD educated us on how to do our best to prevent crime like this from happening. They said a number of things like having lights on, not having window covers, keeping cash boxes open, things like that. So we did blast all of those events to all of our members and everyone in our network on our social media and on our e-blast. So thank you to the PD for your hard work on that. But my question for you guys is, are we giving the PD all of the resources that we possibly can to prevent this from happening in the future? It's happened over the course of several months. And for mom and pop businesses that make Galt what it is, it's really hurtful to their businesses, even if there's not a lot of stolen property, replacing windows, getting a new cash register, that couple thousand dollars is super impactful to their bottom line and super detrimental to their business. And so we just want to make sure that you guys are giving the police and whoever else can help with this all the resources that, you know, we can to prevent this. A couple of suggestions might be, you know, approving the budget for more surveillance equipment, maybe approving the budget for more nighttime patrol over the next several months. You know, I don't know all the answers, but I just want to ask for help. Also, as you guys know, retention for businesses in Galt is something we're struggling with right now. We've had a couple of longtime businesses leave Galt, and we're also trying to recruit businesses into Galt. And to make that easier on us and Amy Mendez and everyone that's working really hard on that, I think lowering the crime happening to our existing businesses would be super helpful. So, again, just if there's anything, any resources that we haven't exhausted, we ask that we please deploy those. Thank you again to the police department for all you guys have been doing to combat this. And if we have exhausted all of our resources, just a statement on social media or out to our businesses, I think would really go a long way, just saying what you've been doing, so that way the public knows. Because sometimes they think they don't know everything that we've been doing, and I think it would go a long way from some of our leaders. One last thing, sorry, I'm all over the place. Thank you to those of you that have reached out to the business community, whether it be visiting them, if they've been impacted by the crime, or just chatting with them about things they can do. That really goes a long way with our business community, and your support of our businesses is what keeps our small town what it is. So, thank you, and that's all I got for you.
Thank you, Ms. Madison, thank you.
Phyllis Johnson.
Thank you. I'm going to talk as a private citizen of Galt for two issues I've brought up before, and I believe they would come under public safety. One being regarding traffic, and I'll give an exact location, so the example will make sense. It's on C Street and Second. If you go to make a right turn from C to Second, you have to use part of the bicycle lane, which is marked accordingly, to make that turn. And it's only a one-lane road. If people park at the end of that line, it's very hard to make the turn, and as a result, you're jeopardizing the people going straight as well. Perhaps maybe, I don't know what the rules are, if you could have a sign, "Parking No. Here to Corner" or something at the end of these bicycle lanes where the turns are being or trying to be made properly. The second one. The fire department on Guild Street is non-existent. I've heard there's short staffing or whatever. But if a train is coming by, I guess we're on the wrong side of the tracks because there's no way that the fire department can help us being on Fifth Street or whatever at the main area. I would like to see the one on Guild Street resurfaced. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis Johnson. All right, thank you for all the public comment. I'd like to ask the council member, any short comment you guys want to make? Anybody want to make any comment, or we need to move the next item? Thank you, sir. The next agenda item is a report by city council member on regional board commission and committee. Council member, Papunam.
The date was August 24th. We had the meeting of the Air Quality Management District. And one item could be interesting to the public. Our next meeting, September 28th, and other council members, will actually be an open public workshop on hydrogen technology. And it's actually the opinion of quite a few of the people on the board that that may be a technology that holds a better future than electric vehicles and so forth. So if you're interested, 9 o'clock, September 28th, down at the Board of Supervisors chambers. And also of note, the Folsom city council member was there bragging about the two Teslas they're adding to their patrol fleet. Just, I'm just saying, you know. Well, you know. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, council member, it's Lisanne.
Yeah, I have a couple of items briefly. I attended the SECOG board meeting in Yuba County. Just the general normal business, but the interesting part was, we did a tour of the city of Marysville downtown area. We got to speak with a lot of local business owners and talk to them about how they developed their business down there and how they bring people in. They have a little bit of a unique situation that the highway runs right through their city. So that helps when it's a block away from downtown. But it was very interesting to talk to not only local family-owned businesses, but local franchisees who live in the city, but, you know, have a franchise restaurant and/or other business, and how they're affected by that lack of income that they were seeing there in Marysville. So it was very interesting. If you get a chance, go down there. They are doing great things with entertainment as well as local eateries and other restaurants. And then also, I've been attending several Cal Cities meetings regarding the Resolutions Committee for the Annual Conference and the Delegate Committee for the Annual Conference, and so looking forward to that at the end of the month. And I will report back on that conference, likely the first meeting in October. So that is still moving forward. And then lastly, the Vice Mayor and I attended the Kasimnas CSD 2x2 meeting and had a lot of good discussion about Station 46, which is over on the east side of the highway. And talked about that, and then some upcoming events that they're going to have. And Phyllis, I'm going to just take this opportunity to get somebody in touch with you that can help bring some clarity to what is going on at that fire station on the other side. And so before you leave, make sure you give me your phone number, and I'll have somebody give you a call, all right? And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member, Farmer.
I don't have anything official to report since the last meeting. Thanks.
Myself, nothing to report tonight. Next agenda item is J, information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 6 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Subject, receive and file warrant for period ending August 23rd, 2023. Recommendation, action, receive and file warrant for period ending August 23rd, 2023. Number two, subject, minute of the regular meeting of August 15th, 2023. Recommend, action, accept the minute as submitted. Number three, Treasury report for period ending July 2023. Recommended action, accept the Treasury report as submitted. Item number four, capitalization policy update. Recommended action, adopt a resolution approving the revised capital asset policy and reactive application to fiscal year 2022, 2023. Item number five, Police Department Dispatch Center Council replacement. Recommended action, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of four new Dispatch Center Council ZIBX systems using budget, measure, or funds in the amount not to exceed $105,000. Item number six, gym equipment purchase and appropriation request. Recommended action, adopt a resolution appropriating $58,000 General Fund, Fund 001 to Police Department, Capital 001-515-721-8095, and authorizing the use of those funds for purchase of gym equipment for use in the Police Department gym. Adopt a resolution authorizing the reimbursement of up to $58,000 from NCCSIF to the General Fund, Fund 001. Reserve the purchase of gym equipment for use in the Police Department gym. Any council member want to pull any item on this consent calendar? And myself, I would like to pull that item number 6, just for the little bit more detail. Chief, can you just give me a little bit brief? Actually, we are not using the General Fund money. We're going to get that money back.
This item is before you for the appropriation and then the authorization for the reimbursement from the Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund, which has provided funding for local jurisdictions, including Galt, and the necessary revenues to purchase equipment that supports the employee's safety. And so, some of those items have been, that they've engaged in reimbursement on, has been the body-worn cameras, and that's actually was a requirement prior to using it for anything else. They've used it for other things like ballistic helmets and shields and batons and other equipment. This request, like other agencies, is requesting the updating of equipment that we have in the Police Department gym, and I want to clarify that it's open to all City of Galt full-time and part-time employees who do use that facility. It just happens to be located at the Police Department, and we are the lucky ones that get to lead the project. But with that said, this request is for the appropriation of the equipment purchase, and will replace existing equipment that's been there for up to 20 years, some of it donated by the GPOA in past years, and individual items that have been purchased, you know, five and six years ago. And so, the staff worked with regular users of the gym outside the Police Department, including members of the department, and identified the necessary equipment that they thought would be beneficial. This item's been run through NCCSIF, and they've concurred with the reimbursement. So, this is just your authorization for us to expend the money and then receive the money, and it is no ultimate general fund expense to the city.
Thank you, Chief, for your explanation. Any councilmember have any? So, the item from 1 through 5, I'm looking to approve the motion. And I'm looking for a second.
Second. And just to clarify, did you still want to pull 6 and discuss it again?
I can do it separate.
Okay, you can do it in one motion. Yeah, you got clarification, you might as well just do one motion at this point.
All right, for 1 to 6. So, it was moved by Rich Lozano, councilmember, and second by Kevin Papano. Tina may have a...
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
And Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
And motion passed by 4 to 0. Thank you. And the next agenda item is Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hearing. There is no Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hearing today. Agenda item L, Regular Calendar. City Council Office. Subject: Request for Qualification/Request for Proposal to Gauge the Feasibility of the Galt Chamber District Commerce Visit Galt Initiative. Recommendation Action: Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the Assurance of a Request for Qualification/Request for Proposal for a Feasibility Study of Galt District Chamber of Commerce Visit Galt Initiative. Directing the City Manager to Bring Request for Qualification and Request for Proposal. Responses back to the City Council for Final Selection. Number 3. Authorizing an Appropriation of $50,000 from Fund 001 to Fund the Contract Effort. So, this agenda item is with the Kevin?
Yeah. So, for the background, when the Chamber came with the Visit Galt Initiative proposal and the request for ARPA funding for that, after much council discussion and public and chamber input, we formed an ad hoc committee, myself and the mayor, and then two representatives from the Chamber elected officers, as well as chamber staff, and Amy Mendez and the City Manager. We began working on the ad hoc committee, made pretty good progress. I am not able to get into any details of it, because that's why it's an ad hoc committee. And we hit a point where, in order to come back in this forum with a proposal that we could support with enough details as to scope of work and what we actually need, what we maybe don't need, and what each of those things will cost. There was not enough knowledge in the room. It was clear that that needs to come from consultants, of which we considered the input, possible input of a few. And we have decided to come back at this point and ask for the full council to approve this $50,000, and to put out a request for consultants to give us proposals to provide this information. That essentially is where we are tonight, and do we have any public comment on this item?
We have Madison Delbrug.
Hi, Council. Madison Delbrug, President with the Galt Chamber here again. I'm also joined by Kat Seebolt, who is our Membership and Events Manager. I wanted to come and speak on the recommendation brought to you today. We certainly super appreciate the initiative to move forward with this and, you know, hopefully get the ball moving on what we've been working super hard on. I do, however, recommend voting this down and perhaps bringing up an alternate motion. I think that the $50,000 is a gross overestimate of the budget needed to do what I think is looking for to be done. So, we did get a proposal from a company, SMG Consulting, to do some tourism, economic modeling, and some Galt strategy design, and I'll pass these out to you. But the cost of this is $6,500, and what it does is, it's kind of the first step in the process, and I think it's exactly what the feasibility is. It looks at Galt, it looks at the tourism features that we offer, how we can advertise and exploit that, and what we can expect to get in return from it. I'm going to hand it over to Kat to talk a little bit about Carl, who is the owner and consultant with SMG Consulting, and give you guys a little bit of background. But again, I just think that this path might be a better use of time, certainly a better use of resources, and might expedite things and save the city some money. $50,000 seems like a lot, just for it to come back to you, for you to say if it is or is not feasible. If it's not, that would be a huge waste of money versus $6,500. Okay, I'm going to bring you guys these.
Just to give you some information about Carl, we reached out to the President and CEO of Visit Stockton, and he referred us to Carl, who has worked with Visit California. So, part of the reason why we are getting this at such a discounted rate is because he has a lot of the raw data already from that program. He's worked with Travel Nevada as well, working on their Tourism Marketing Committee. And so, what he will do is basically go through a SWOT analysis, help us define what Galt's new reality is, but also what creates the tourism destination for Galt. So, we're hoping that that answers your questions about Carl a little bit, but he did come highly regarded within the Visit California group.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Anybody else first?
Not yet, maybe in a few minutes, but I don't, at this moment, you know, not for her.
I trust that Frank will hit me if I start stepping too far. First, it's my belief that if we appropriate $50,000, it's there, we don't have to spend it. This is a process of who's going to come with the best offer, most responsive of what we need at the best price. So, and I don't think there's an issue with the fear of us spending too much in that As far as a consultant coming forward, and I don't know if he would...
I think he would certainly be happy to submit his proposal.
Yeah. And that's kind of where I'm getting. And the way this item was put together, it's a little bit different than a lot of bids in that we, as the two members on the ad hoc committee, have requested that this come back, and then the council approve it, rather than coming with a recommendation from staff as to, "We think you should pick this guy." So, you know, that being said, I was certainly, and we've discussed, he seems to be a very credible fellow, but I'd like us to put this out and encourage him to come forward, you know, with what we need. And we'll put out the requests with the specific parameters of what we want to see, you know, among those being a budget recommendation from an expert on things that we don't know because we haven't been there yet. So, that's my thought.
I appreciate the clarification that I was due.
Yeah, I have some question. I mean, I understand the gist of this. I understand that, you know, there's, just to kind of put it in layman's terms, a discussion whether or not to appropriate the ARPA money that we set aside, any of it, to the Galt Chamber for the Visit Galt Initiative, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then, we have the ad hoc, two members of our council, to have those meetings with chamber and staff and so on. I just, what I'm trying to figure out is like, I mean, first of all, it weighs heavy to have two councilmembers come back and say, "This is what we want to do." I mean, obviously, you're our peers, so we want to, you know, take that seriously. So, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. So, the purpose of the consultant would be to look at their proposal and just, for example, like, I don't know, they would look and decide, the consultant would report back and say, if we hired a consultant, they would report back and say whether or not they thought, you know, the $100,000 of the money for the initial advertising and marketing cost seemed like that was an appropriate number, like, in their opinion. And then, the 200 for hire, they're going to look at that and think, and give their expert opinion on whether or not they think those numbers are accurate or right? Is that my understanding? Okay. But I just think, and I get, I'm glad you said, Kevin, that it may not be 50 grand, because originally coming here, and I'm like, 50 grand, like, we're going to spend 50 grand, decide if we're going to give 150 grand? That's silly. So, I mean, part of me, I don't, part of me doesn't even like the idea of doing the consulting. I think it's just, I think we're just, this whole thing is just stagnated, and I just want to be past it. But if this is what it takes to move the ball forward, is having a second set of eyes look at it, or a third set of eyes, I guess in this case, look at it and say, "Yeah, we think what, you know, the Chamber's proposing is decent, we do think those numbers are fairly accurate," but if that's what it takes to move the ball forward, to get this council to, could we get to a point where we can make a decision to do or not do, then I would support something. I think at this point, though, I'd be more inclined to just, based on what they're showing me from this consulting, which seems like a reputable guy, I mean, worked for Visit California and all that, maybe I would be more comfortable with approving a smaller number. I feel like, it would be, I would be shocked if, like, all the bids came in at 30 grand, 40 grand, 50 grand, and then this guy's 6,500. I think, I don't even know, if they did, I would be happy with, I don't think I'd be comfortable with approving anything that high anyways. So, I would be more likely to incline to support a smaller number tonight, to get a consultant. I'm not a big fan of the consulting idea, but again, in the spirit of moving things forward with the recommendation of you, Kevin, and the mayor, I would be willing to do that, but not 50 grand. I would be thinking more like 10 or something. That's just my initial thoughts, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
May I add? I know consultants sometimes get a bad rap, and they, we spend a lot of money and not a lot in return. I do think this consulting, if we hire the right person, would be, we would get data from them that we could use in the process, so hopefully it's not money wasted, but I see where you're coming from.
Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah. I have many questions, but in the interest of sticking to the topic in front of us, so I don't get beat up by the attorney. I guess I have, just a question for Councilmember Papano. Did, I don't even know if I can, I'm going to ask it, tell me if you can answer it or not. In the ad hoc committee, did you guys discuss the parameters of what we'd be looking for in a consultant to take?
Yeah. We essentially hit a spot where we needed questions answered, and as I said before, there's not enough knowledge in the room to answer those questions, so that we could adequately, you know, fill out the proposal to bring back here. That's where we hit, and...
Okay. And I, too, am not a huge fan of consultants just to consult, but I certainly think they have a place when we, as an organization or a community, don't have the expertise to, and there's many examples, community development and public works and parks and recreation, and hopefully that'll be coming back to us at some point to take a look at our master plan, things like that. I would be willing to support moving this forward, because I think we do need to get something done and get our partnership solidified through an agreement. And if it does that, certainly, as Councilmember Farmer mentioned, I am willing to move it forward. Terms of the costs, I have no idea what these people cost, as it relates to what you guys talked about. So, if it's a not to exceed, I'd be willing to move it forward.
Definitely, the 50 is definitely a not to exceed, and I quite frankly think that gives us a lot of room to work in. One of our fears was going out small and then finding out that nobody can give us what we want for that, and now we got to start over and come back and ask for another approval. I'm also not, you know, a fan of spending money on consultants for consultants' sake, but as I said, we have questions that nobody in the room can answer, and we can't move forward until that's answered, and we can't come back, you know, confident to the community to say, "We're going to spend this money on this," unless we can say, "We're getting A, B, C, and D for these things in this plan." And we're just, we're not there, and like I said before, it's a, this is a situation that's different than many of our other things that we've put out for bid, as this will come back and the council will have to approve the vendor. And, you know, if Carl comes back with everything we need for 6,000 and something, awesome. If not, then, you know, and the mayor and I don't get, the question's answered that we need, we're going to have to look at, you know, who out there can fill it. So, again, it's, I think it's, you know, out of an abundance of caution before we dive into this thing.
And it is, it's, I mean, we're talking about not just an initial investment of the, a request of like 500,000 or right around there, but it's an ongoing, there was a request for about 100,000 a year of TOT. So, I mean, that's a pretty good investment. I think, I think, I, you know, I trust that you and the mayor know ins and outs of the ad hoc, and if this is something that we need to do, I think we need to move it forward.
Yeah, and that's correct. This was an initial request for roughly 500,000, as I recall at the beginning. I won't get into our discussions in the meantime as to, you know, any numbers that have fluctuated, but, and we have, and as you indicated, discussed the TOT on an ongoing basis of, you know, somewhere, numbers have been thrown around, and that's kind of where we run into questions as to what should those numbers really be, and nobody can answer it. This is the solution that staff and the ad hoc have come up with. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
So, Mr. Papinao, you know, same thing Farmer said, I think everybody concerned is 50,000-dollar lot of money. And I think everybody thinking the money going to the consultant, if, I don't know, it can be more or less. And I believe again, when we make a ad hoc committee, I was in the impression, I believe everybody in the impression, there is two intelligent council member and mayor on the committee, from the chamber intelligent, and there is staff. And I'm talking, I'm agree with you, whatever you can make a decision, what kind of hurdle you guys don't get that information so we can make a decision? I know they're asking 500,000 dollars, they might be not reasonable. Or what's the reason you guys cannot something, get together, all the staff, mayor, you have lots of expertise everywhere, and the chamber? I'm like, in 50,000 dollars, we still don't know what they give you, what they can give the information. My second question is, if they bring some kind of offer, I don't get a chance to look at the offer, if something we can work with 6,500 instead of 50,000, we should be try that. And the other thing, you know, this proving is can, two things, one, 50,000, the other thing, that process going to drag and drag, or you can take time to hire a consultant, then we're going to take a time to give the report from them, then you guys can have a meeting. So, that's kind of, you know, whatever you guys make a decision, you guys intelligent person, let me, you know, what kind of hurdle you guys get, what kind of information you don't get from the staff? Staff have all the information, TOT, sale tax, they have the information. They can, they can tell you what's the expectation this year, and how many room added to the whole city, and what can be expected, unless it's a coverage, different story, but there's a very expect revenue, is very stable, can be year to year.
Yeah, and you're outlining some parts of the discussion, but we can't get into what the ad hoc committee's discussions were. We'd be violating the whole premise of it. But no, with all of the, as you say, intelligent people and experienced people in the room, there's some questions that we can't answer, and much like when we ask for, you know, consultants to tell us our tax revenue and stuff, we need outside expert analysis, and this is the solution that we propose. And if it's not, we will go back handicapped, but I hate to make a potential half million-dollar decision plus up to 100,000 dollars a year ongoing without the confidence knowing that I have the best information to make that decision.
I did just want to add to that, that this was part of the initiative we presented, so I don't want it to come across that the chamber wasn't looking for this information. This was something that we did seek out and brought to the ad hoc to get those questions answered. And then also, my second question would be what the timeline would look like for this.
I can't speak to specifics, but my request would be as soon as possible. That's kind of the, you know, the purpose of this. We can, we can sit and go in circles by ourselves in the ad hoc. I just want the hard numbers on the table so we can make a decision, get moving. So, maybe, you know, maybe the city manager can talk about what, you know, actual timeline would look like to get us some proposals back.
I'll have a discussion with Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez, first thing in the morning. We'll come up with a timeline. I'll get that information out to council tomorrow, no later than, no later than Thursday.
And I would just add that the way this is written, it comes back regardless of what the proposals are and how much they cost, it comes back for full council to approve. And we get to pick the one we want. This is not coming back to us as we traditionally do with a recommendation from staff saying, we recommend this one, take it or leave it. We actually have, are going to have them on the table to choose from them.
Mr. Vresmer, I do appreciate that last comment about you said how, you know, we do have the, it's going to come back for us to say no, so I mean, that's very true. I just, I just feel like, you know, I'm looking at this, it's March 7th, it's been six months on this thing. I knew when we approved the ad hoc that this thing was just going to drag on like this, I just knew it. And no fault to council members, I know there's just been big lengths of time between meetings and stuff. I just, it's like, if I, I'm looking at one of the things that they're asking for, like, you know, 200,000 dollars to hire an executive director for four years. I mean, that's like 50 grand a year. I mean, practically work at like, you know, Kohl's and make 50 grand a year. I mean, I don't, I'm not looking at these numbers thinking they're exasperated. One thing I was thinking about, and I don't know how many, I was assuming Amy Mendez is in some of these meetings or has been, but, you know, she's very knowledgeable, this is her wheelhouse. I think, you know, saying that we don't have enough knowledge in the room, I mean, I think Ms. Mendez could easily look and go, yeah, 100,000 dollars for a marketing, you know, for how long is that for? Yeah, I mean, that sounds, you know, I mean, I know she can't pinpoint exactly, but I just feel that 50 grand, or I know it might not be 50 grand, it could be 10 grand, it could be 6,500, I don't know, but it's just, it's just, I don't know, I just feel like, I've said this before, I feel like if the staff had come to us, like, if, if Ms. Mendez had come to us and said, I want to start an issue, you know, and I'm not picking on you, Amy, just because this is your, this is your department, if staff came and, you know, and Ms. Mendez gave a presentation saying, this is, we want to do a Visit GALT proposal, we're going to brand GALT, we're going to do marketing, this is all the breakdown of the law, and presented it all, we'd probably be like, yeah, sounds great, you know, and we would trust that the numbers were good, and we would trust that, you know, I don't know, I just, I doubt that she would come, or staff would come and say, we want you to hire a consultant to look at our own numbers to see if they're accurate, and then come back and decide. I just don't think that would be the case. I think we would just be like, we're going to give you this much, or we're not, or whatever. So, it's like, for me, it's the principle of it. I just feel like we're just squirreling around here and, and, you know, and I know it's a lot of money, and like Mr. Lozano said, you know, there's a TOT request, so it could be long term, and we want to make sure we're doing the right thing, but I just feel like, we're just like, it's this big, huge double standard right here, and we're just, you know, time is money, and, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Papinao and Mr. Vanderburg don't want to keep going to ad hoc meetings for the next, you know, the rest of their terms. And neither does the staff. So, for me, look, I get it, it'll come back, you know, we'll get to approve it, but for me, the principle tonight, I'm just going to, I'm sorry, but I'm just going, I'm going to pass on it for this tonight. If the three of you say yes, then, then it'll move forward, and I'm sure it'll be a good process and everything, but I think for me tonight, I'm just going to say no on the principle of it, I just don't, I'm just not feeling right about the whole thing already, I'm just discouraged. So, I, no disrespect to you, Kevin, or to the mayor, we appreciate you guys at least coming back with something after all this time. So, that's the last that I have to say, and I'll wait for there to be a motion or something. So, thank you.
Do we have another comment?
We have another public comment.
I'd like to hear it.
Chris Brosman.
Good evening. I think you guys, like my banker, you're guarding my tax dollar. I view the chamber as coming for a loan or a business proposal. And yet, you're being asked to provide the information to make the business case viable. I don't know any banker that would operate on that basis. What I hear from Kevin is, we're in a ad hoc, and we can't talk about it. Well, transparency is the key word of politics today, so there's not much transparency in that. As I remember, the chamber's commerce proposal, they got two desks that are going to run us 20,000 dollars. So, I'll second Sean's 20,000 dollar investment if you want to look at this proposal further, but I would love to look at the Saturday market and the success that we've had on it going. I think that is the true tourism draw to GALT. We've proven with the Saturday market, with the turnout of people, and the chamber has supported it, is we're showing that that brings revenue and it brings people. Again, I've always looked at the market grounds and said, why not? We've got two years back to back showing that the Saturday market is working, we're getting more and more people coming out, and what I see a lot of times is local people showing up, which to me, I can't tell you the last time I went to a Tuesday and Wednesday because I'm never in GALT on a Tuesday or a Wednesday while the market's going on. So, I enjoy supporting it. To me, half a million dollars is a huge amount of money. I hear, listening to Kevin, that, you know, Kevin doesn't even want to put his own name fully on this thing and say, hey, I'm going to approve half a million dollars, and I'm going to approve 100,000 dollars, and I appreciate your wisdom, I think you've done us well in your role. But if he's not willing to put his name on it, I don't have Jay here to ask, are you all willing to put your name on it and go, okay, we're going to give up half a million upfront, 100,000 dollars for the next, how many years? Again, because it's an ad hoc committee, we don't know. We don't know what our commitment is. We're asking to buy in and buy in and buy in. The other side is, if we go with the chambers person that they picked, amazingly enough, how do you think that study's going to come back? There's going to be a bias. That's where, I do believe that if you're going to do it, it needs to go out the bid, and that we get, hopefully, someone that doesn't have any bias to it. And I don't know the dollars involved, I appreciate that, but I'm not willing to bet on a horse that I don't know his record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Ms. Silver, can you? I have a couple of questions for you.
For me?
Yes.
Can I ask one?
Yes. As it relates to this proposal that you gave us, I haven't been able to read all the way through it, but is this proposal from Mr. Rubato, is it similar to what the intent was to find a consultant in the ad hoc that was brought to us today? Is it the same, is it apples to apples, or is it, or are there more items that we need to look at?
If I understand what I think you're asking, it's the first step, so it's the identity process of determining GALT's identity, what tourism in GALT looks like, what promoting tourism in GALT looks like, where the gaps are, what we need to fill. So, it is the first step in that process, yes. And if I may, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. The reasons the desks were included in this initial proposal we submitted is because Visit GALT would be sharing an office with the chamber, and if there's two entities sharing one space, we thought it was reasonable that they share the costs of that space. There's something else, but if it comes to me, I'll let you know. Also, in the, you know, in this discovery process, the Saturday market may be a huge thing, that we're spending a lot of our marketing dollars promoting, and maybe that is a big part of the tourism and something that we really need to promote, and maybe that's a big part of Visit GALT, is working with the city to do that. That's not out of the question, it's not, we're not necessarily just creating new things, it could be exploiting what we already have and promoting what we already have. We've really worked well with the city throughout the, I would say, second and third quarter of this year, and we plan to continue to do that. Do you have any other questions?
No, that was it.
I just want to make one other statement, it's not for you, Mr. Bro, just, and Mr. Brosman knows I have high respects for all his comments, and I appreciate him always being here making comments, and I know that Mr. Brosman and I are kind of at odds on the whole concept of this money, but I just want to remind for the public too that, you know, we talk about money up here, about different things, and money for this and money for that, and, and I think what a lot of people don't understand is what money is intended for what. This money, whether it's 500,000 or it's, well, it's not even 500,000 been asked for, whether it's 50,000, we don't even know. We don't even know if this council's going to do anything. But, with that being said, this is leftover ARPA money that was given by the federal government, and I know it's still tax dollars, I know Mr. Brosman's thinking that right now, but this money was earmarked by the council originally, 1.3 million dollars to give to businesses for COVID relief, to help promote business economics, everything has to do with, you know, business growth, boosting the economy in our town, everything. Through two rounds, we failed to give out the 1.3. For me personally, this is just my comment, but I wanted to see the rest of that money go to the business community. In my opinion, whatever we end up giving through this is going to be going to the business community by proxy because it's boosting the economy. This is not 500,000 that could be, you know, that we should have used for, you know, over here to fix a park, all this kind of stuff. This money, if we would have given it out through the business program, we wouldn't be talking right now. But because it didn't get, it didn't give given out, we're now wanting to snatch it back from the businesses and help the economy, and we want to use it for something else. And trust me, they'll be, they'll find other ways to use it, and it won't go to help businesses. But anyways, I just want to point that out, that this is where the money is, in case we've all forgotten over the last seven months.
So, my last question, Mr. Papinao, this proposal, you are very much agree, and Jay's not here, I cannot ask him a question, and as the ad hoc committee, he was agreed with the 50,000 dollar?
Yeah, this wouldn't be in front of us if Jay and I hadn't both approved it in its current form. So, yes, that's approved. And something that popped into mind when Mr. Brosman was talking also is, in spite of the inauspicious beginning to this discussion under the guidance of Frank Gialdo, this ad hoc did start very productive, and Ms. Mendez and Mr. Hines were brought in, and it has not been adversarial. It's been productive, we've been moving forward with, I thought, good progress, or, you know, we still have good progress in place on many of the parts of this plan to benefit the business community and to maximize the, you know, the teamwork and productiveness of the city partnered with the chamber. So, it, you know, it has definitely not been that, and, you know, I am not of a feeling that, you know, this guy would come back, you know, as an expert for one side and, you know, go their direction, but in our discussions, we thought full information is best, and it's always good to have a second opinion, you know, and, you know, another analogy is, when you're going to make an investment, sometimes you got to pay a little bit for an investment advisor to make sure that you're investing the right way. So, that's our feeling. I don't think there's much more than can be said other than to vote it up or down.
All right, thank you. And especially, I have no intent to, you know, ask question to the council member, but this is just a clarification, you know, you know, the only thing that's still in my mind is 50,000 dollars is a lot of money. My next question might be a city manager. If we approve tonight, and we're going to get the beds, these beds can be, you're going to, when you guys looking, really looking close to the lowest bed, also Bell qualified too, or just can we get one or two beds? Okay, this is the person is qualified, and can you just little bit, because my, look at this, my comment is, this money is the public money.
Right.
Whatever, that's not mean, whatever they make a decision, chamber already agreed to whatever decision they make it, that's why it's an agenda item. My thing is, can we... My thing is, can we do less instead of 50? Might be some beds you can come up with 20. And yes, I want to be transparent. I want to be a minimum money spent and transparent. Can you a little bit explain how the beds can work?
So we will be looking for the vendor that has the proposal, that responds to the needs of the ad hoc committee, and that proposal's got to be backed up by the qualifications of that vendor. And so the ultimate objective is to be able to provide this information to the ad hoc committee so they can make a decision that is sound and well based and well and defendable. And so that's how that decision will ultimately come back to council.
Thank you. Any other comment by any council member?
I just have like two, two comments. One, in the staff report, this, we're using general fund money for this, so we're not using the, any of the $473,000 balance for ARPA for businesses?
Yes, sir. Up to, up to $50,000 general fund.
And we still do have ARPA money set aside in the amount of at least 450,000?
Last night I was in the vault, that's what I counted.
Matt, what did you count? That's the important guy right there. I appreciate that, and I'd be willing to, if there's no other comments by my council members, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve the item before us, as, as Red.
It's moved by Councilmember Leta Lozano.
I'll second it.
All right, it's seconded by Kevin Papina. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Papina?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
No.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passed for three to one. So next agenda item is city manager's office. Subject, resolution amending the temporary development impact fee deferral program to include a developmental impact fee reduction element. Recommended action, adopted resolution amending the City of Galt temporary development impact fees, the full program to include a development impact fees reduction element for qualifying non-residential development project. Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to pass the baton over to our Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Good evening, members of City Council. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. I am here this evening, trying to see which one I have a better view of, it's probably this one, to present an item, which actually is an amendment to the fee deferral program I brought to you back in February. And so this is a request to add a fee reduction item to the program to allow for us to reduce development impact fees for certain qualifying projects. Part of the 2021-2023 City Council strategic plan is to pursue economic development opportunities to attract and retain industrial and retail users that enhance the quality of life for Galt residents. As part of that, the strategic task associated with the goal is to develop incentive and resource programs to enhance business attraction and expansion efforts in Galt. And historically, over the last couple of years, we have developed various incentive programs in an attempt to incentivize both commercial, industrial, and even residential development to an extent from an infill standpoint. A recurring concern from businesses and developers that we have heard and continue to hear is really the upfront financial commitment required in the form of fees. And essentially, Galt, along with all the cities in California, requires various development impact fees and capacity fees to be paid to ensure that new development pays the capital costs associated with growth. This includes fees for roadway, roadway impacts, storm drainage, water, sewer, and general government impacts. And so depending on the building project size, these fees can range from tens of thousands of dollars to million dollars, millions of dollars per project. The payment of the development impact fees can often be a deciding factor in a business's decision as to whether or not to locate in Galt or a neighboring or even out of state, sometimes depending on what the fees are. And so what we have done is tried to put together some programs to entice businesses to locate here in the community. As you recall, back in February, City Council adopted a temporary development impact fee deferral program, which essentially allowed for the deferral of eligible development impact fees and capacity fees for up to a period of 36 months. This fee deferral is available for all non-residential developments in the community if a developer or business chooses to take advantage of it. It essentially offers a deferral of fees, development impact fees over a 36-month period. Although this is helpful with specific developments, a lot of times smaller developments that are able to take advantage of the fee deferral, it's not necessarily enough of an incentive to attract users to the community. And so what this program that I'm proposing is, essentially is a reduction of development impact fees. So we would have the fee deferral that's available for all non-residential projects that come through the city, but the proposed development impact fee reduction would only be for qualified projects. This would reduce the payment of certain development impact fees for non-residential projects that meet a, certain parameters within the program. Essentially only available, this would only be available to targeted commercial and industrial projects that provide a direct public benefit through the generation of annual sales tax, property tax, and/or transient occupancy tax to the City of Galt. Under this program, the revenue that a development project is generating and paying to the city would justify the reduction in fees. The fee reduction would only be available to targeted commercial users, as I mentioned previously. These parameters are the same as the sewer credit program that we had adopted back in 2019. And so trying to stay within the same parameters of that incentive program, we're targeting the sit-down restaurants that the community has been asking, has been asking for and requesting, entertainment-type businesses, which always comes up in any type of survey that we do, hotels in terms of the TOT, and people that come into the community and stay here and spend their money at retail or restaurants. And then also, we've added non-grocery, big box and junior box retailers greater than 20,000 square feet. This is essentially to have a incentive that's available for retailers, large-scale retailers that may be interested in developing on the Simmerhorn site or even the Corleone Corners property, which has had quite a bit of interest lately due to the Liberty Ranch project now being under construction. And so projects that meet these targeted users would be eligible for this if they meet the revenue criteria, and I'll get into that in just a minute. Industrial users would also be eligible as long as they are employing 10 or more employees. The fee reduction amount would be based on the direct total revenue estimated to be collected by the city in the first full year of the business's operation. This would be through sales tax, property tax, and/or TOT tax. The business would have to show that within a one-year period, they would generate an amount equal to or greater than what the revenue, what the reduction would be on their fees. The fee reduction could not exceed 1.5% of the total development cost or $99,900, whichever is less. And so this table shows what that fee reduction would look like for a development project. We have an industrial user right now who's interested in locating in the community. We've been working with them on their project, going through the process, through planning and through engineering, and essentially looking at that project as an example, we would look at what their year-one direct total revenue would be to the city. And so if they are within 75,000 to 100,000, between property tax and sales tax, this is in a hotel, so they wouldn't be generating any TOT, as long as their revenue to the city in their first full one year of operation was over $75,000, we would provide them with a $75,000 fee reduction. I was hoping to provide a fee estimate for you guys to take a look at. Our fees have recently changed, and so the fee estimates that I have are a little bit old, and so I didn't put one in here. But sewer fees can be upwards of $1 million for a project. And so, you know, looking at a $99,000 incentive, it is a drop in the bucket, but it's something to at least show that we are willing to work with a user. And so the fees typically run, you know, depending on a tenant improvement or a full-scale project, we did a fee estimate the other day for a 800,000 square foot industrial user. Somebody was just, you know, investigating on the Kessler property whether or not they would want to do a warehouse, and that fee estimate was upwards of $6 million. So that goes to show how expensive it is to build some of these larger-scale projects. And so that doesn't necessarily translate to smaller-scale projects, but it just gives you an idea of how expensive it can be to construct. And so having this as a tool in the toolbox to be able to offer, in addition to, you know, Galt being a small city, we have an amazing planning and community development and engineering team that, you know, will fast-track and sit down and work with developers. That's, time is money is really important to these guys. So we do have a few things to offer that larger cities aren't able to. This would just be one more tool that we could provide in terms of an incentive that would be available. Before determining the eligible development impact fee reduction, the city will be commissioning an economic and revenue impact analysis to verify that the project's estimated revenue in year one equals or exceeds the fee reduction amount. And so this would be paid for by the developer. The city would commission an economic impact analysis to determine what that revenue looks like and to verify that the projection on the revenue exceeds what that fee reduction amount is. I don't know if you guys were on council a couple of years ago when we did the incentive for La Quinta. This is very similar to what we did for the La Quinta Hotel. It was a fee reduction off of their sewer fee because we knew there was going to be a significant amount of TOT coming forward to the city. And so really, that's the justification here for this. The applicant will also be required to enter into a fee reduction and indemnification agreement with the City of Galt before granting a reduction of fees. And the fee reduction will be contingent on final completion of the project with set construction timelines as defined in the agreement. And so indemnifying the city of any liability as it relates to the fee reduction, but also wanting to ensure that that economic and revenue impact shows what that justification is on that reduction. The application and review process, essentially, an applicant would submit a development impact fee reduction. This is very similar to what we proposed for the fee deferral. It would be reviewed by the Community Development Director to ensure that the project is in compliance with all of the state and federal and local development guidelines, the Public Works Director, the Finance Director, and myself, the Economic Development Manager. I would commission an economic and revenue impact analysis paid for by the applicant to determine what that revenue impact would be to the city in year one, but also moving into the future so we see kind of a full scope of what that looks like. And then once the eligibility is confirmed and the total fee reduction amount is determined, the applicant will enter into a development impact fee reduction and indemnification agreement with the city. City manager will have final approval on that agreement under the program. And I, just to, you know, kind of make sure that it's understood that this is going to be difficult for most businesses to qualify for in terms of your everyday fast food restaurants will not qualify. They won't meet the requirement for revenue. Some of your smaller gas stations, convenience stores, they will not qualify. These are really targeted in terms of the sit-down restaurants, some of the larger industrial users that we're really trying to bring into the community for job generation It is recommended that the development impact fee reduction program remain in place for 36 months, essentially for us to evaluate how effective it is. And before expiration, I will be evaluating the success of the program and determine whether to bring it back to City Council, either for an extension or any modification of terms. The general fund will be responsible for payment of the fee reduction amount to the respective enterprise funds to ensure that there isn't any loss of revenue to those enterprise funds. The short-term revenue, however, is anticipated to be offset by the ongoing direct revenue provided by this, to the city in year one of whatever the operation is. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, give us all this information. Any council member wants to make the comment? Kevin?
I don't have any questions. I'm pleased to see us working proactively.
It's Lozano.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions real quick. So these, these businesses would have, have to, obviously would have property tax revenue that's coming in that they're paying. But in terms of the other kinds of tax, and not necessarily hotels or TOT, I'm more interested in finding out, these industrial users, would they have to have a point of sale in, in place, or is, are we talking about online sales? And how would that come in?
It would be either. So point of sale would have to be within the community of Galt in order for us to generate sales tax. We will generate sales tax off of materials that are delivered into, like the construction project itself. So we will generate sales tax and use tax off of the construction, but this would be a point of sale ongoing. So for instance, Air Products and Chemicals here in Galt, they are a, one of our higher sales tax generators in the community. We've actually have probably three or four sales tax generators in the industrial area that generate a significant portion of sales tax for the city on an ongoing basis. Most of them are building and construction-related, and so that would be essentially what would be required for an industrial project. And the reason we put the employment number in there is because recently we've had quite a few storage facilities that have been locating here. Not to say that that is, you know, a terrible thing, but it doesn't generate jobs and it doesn't really generate any sales tax for the city. You know, property tax is about it. And so we would be looking for more of a job generation component in addition to sales tax if it was for a user such as an industrial-type user.
Okay. And I just have a quick question. Maybe this is for the city attorney, but I always get the question of, when we do fee deferral programs or anything like that, how is it legal to do and get around the idea or the concept that it's a gift of public funds?
Yeah, it's a good question. First of all, it's codified in state law, the, the concept of economic subsidies, incentive programs, and fee deferrals and fee waivers are allowed by statute specifically. But to your broader question, because there's a manifest public benefit, revenue to the city, economic development, job creation, all of those things, it's not for any private remuneration for any private business, it's for the betterment of the city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mendez, I have just, just for the clarification of question, you said. Ms. Mendez, I have just, just for the clarification of question, you said small business and the big, where do you draw the line, small business and the big business, is not getting the fee deferred or fee reduction?
Well, it could be a small business, you know, a small industrial user that comes in with a point-of-sale that constructs a project that is generating sales tax could potentially qualify for this program. And so it's not really, it really goes back to what that revenue generation looks like. A gas station's not going to qualify from a retail standpoint because they don't meet the square footage criteria. You know, we have had some discount grocery stores that have been, you know, sort of circling the area, and typically, they won't meet the, the sales tax criteria as well because grocery, most of your groceries aren't taxed. But that's sort of the basis. So it would be really based on the revenue generation that comes along with it.
Okay, but like in grocery store, they don't generate that much sale tax because the grocery does not. But if they created more than ten jobs, hypothetically, they usually don't. But then you are also looking for how many jobs create, they're saying not a direct, you know, revenue to the city, but indirect is creating the job is, is, is another word, is kind of same, how are you going to consider that?
You know, I think that if something like that came along that was a benefit to the city that didn't meet the criteria for this program, that's definitely something that we would, you know, look to potentially the city attorney to amend the program, to make the parameters fit, you know, a user that we would view as a benefit to the community if it's a, you know, I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know, if you have a large-scale retail user that doesn't meet the retail criteria in terms of the revenue generation, but it's a huge job generator, maybe that's something we come back and we amend based on that employment number.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. I think all the council are asking you a long time, that's finally you bring them up. Any public comment?
No public comment.
I just wanted to ask one last question. Obviously, we've been asking for this for a while, so, I mean, I clearly support, you know, anything that's going to incentivize the development of the locations that we've, you know, especially infill. I mean, I'm not a fan of sprawl, but infill is like, I think that's, if a development has to happen, that's the best place. But I think, would it be, would it be fair to say, Amy, that this program, though, you know, is really geared towards the bigger business? I mean, it's not really geared towards small business, so that's, generally speaking, right?
For the most part, yes. You know, you would have to, for small type, you know, if we were incentivizing, I just today requested from the city, one of my counterparts in a different city, they have a facade improvement program for their downtown. They have a outdoor dining incentive that they've put together. Those are different types of incentives that you really can't fit into this sort of box here that we've created.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think I just, and thank you for bringing that up, because that's, that's kind of where I was trying to segue into, was just that I would hope that at some point, we could really, you know, this can be, you know, the original one we did for the infill for the, you know, the original infill development we passed in eighteen, or it was early nineteen, I forget, but, and then this is kind of a, that was a springboard for something like this. Now, I would, I would hope that we could keep progressing towards that because what I, what I don't want to do is, you know, I mean, this town, the heart and soul of this town is small business, and I think we need to remember that. And so at some point in the future, when we can start looking at something like that, where we can actually give smaller businesses that are looking to, you know, mom-and-pop places that are trying to start up, help them out in certain ways, I would like to see that, too. I know that's a different discussion, but I do support this tonight, and so thank you for bringing this.
I think in regards to the smaller-type incentive programs, it's important to sort of recognize that many times, those are going to require a general fund subsidy of sorts because there's not the revenue generation there that goes along with it, really show what that public benefit is. And so most cities are subsidizing those with a general fund subsidy of sorts. Sometimes it's a grant-match program, so a business is putting funding in. I will be bringing back the sewer fee reduction program, which will benefit smaller businesses, tenant improvements, restaurants that are looking to do like a kitchen improvement, where you're going to see a sizable sewer fee that goes along with it for change of use. And so that will be coming back, and that provides somewhat of an incentive for smaller businesses from a restaurant standpoint, for the most part. And then the infill, temporary infill reduction will be coming back for residential on the infill in the downtown area.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
If there nobody have no comments and no question, I would like to look in the motion to approve this subject. It was moved by Councilmember Rich Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passed with four to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is communication. Tina, any communication?
Good evening.
Thank you. City clerks report?
Nothing.
I think tonight, thank you. Comment by step, Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Over the past two and a half months, we've had a sort of a rash of some very visible commercial criminal activity. And so Chief Kalinowski is going to give you a summary of those incidents and also what the Galt PD and the city are, have, has done to combat those things. We're also going to give you some statistics that compare this year to last year as far as crime stats. The other thing I wanted to mention is on September thirteenth, we are holding a business forum, two business forums to be held that day, and we're going to invite businesses in to a session from eight to nine a.m. and a session from six to seven p.m. to talk about measures that they can take to harden their businesses and also give them an update on where things are on these, these incidences. So I'm going to turn it over to the chief and let him tell you about the work of the Galt PD.
Thank you, Mr. Hines and Vice Mayor members of council. Earlier, there was a public statement about, you know, supporting the police department and making sure that we have the tools we need. And I will say that this council unanimously has supported all our requests. I don't believe we've ever asked for anything quote-unquote "ridiculous," but things that we need to support the operation. And while it is true that we've had business burglaries since beginning of July, the numbers are, I believe, twelve, where there's actually a loss of money out of cash registers, in a couple of cases, the actual cash registers were taken. Four of those, there was no take, and I think some of that is a result of, well, twofold. First of all, the first group that we are looking at, that three other police jurisdictions are working with us on, we do not believe are part of the most recent group, as they're less sophisticated individuals. And second of all, I think the word has generally gotten out that you don't leave money in your cash register, and you don't leave the cash register closed and things like that. And so that primarily has helped with what I would call the lost situation. Unfortunately, what happens is the windows do get broken. But I wanted to provide some sort of perspective because there's been a lot of chatter about the business burglaries, but I am charged with overall community safety, and that's all crimes, whether it's a smash and grab of twenty dollars out of the change jar, or it's a reported rape or a homicide or otherwise. And so to set some context for the council, in 2022, now, I have to couch this, this is as of August first, because we just closed September over a holiday weekend. My staff is not prepared to give me numbers and won't have them until after September fifteenth. But where we're operating with is on burglaries, and that's where there's forced entry into a business for purposes of theft, or perhaps another crime occurs, another felony or crime occurs where they enter a business or a building to do, to do their business, it can be considered a burglary. And in any case, in 2022, year-to-date, as of August first, we had thirty-four. This year, we have thirty-five. Motor vehicle theft, we had thirty. Year-to-date, we have thirty-one. Robbery, now, these are person-on-person's crimes generally. I could also characterize these as bank robberies, right? I mean, that's something that people would think of, but we don't have those fortunately in Galt. But in 2022, year-to-date is August first, we had eleven. We have eleven in 2023. Where I'm most concerned is aggravated assaults in 2022. This is where you have persons crimes, where people are injured or otherwise. We had sixteen. 2023, we had sixty-two. That's forty-six, an increase of forty-six over that time period. Now, I will expect that that number will even out, but that number is still high for the year. And then theft offenses overall, in 2022, we had one-hundred-and-fifty-nine theft offenses, that somebody stole your bike off the front porch to a push-out of a grocery cart from Rayleigh's, like we had last night, of five-hundred dollars worth of groceries, or petty theft or otherwise from Walmart. We've had a couple incidents where somebody's come in and taken all the Tide from Walgreens and taken off. You've probably seen some of those on social media. But in 2022, we had one-hundred-and-fifty-nine. In 2023, we're running at two-oh-two. And if you look at our annual report that we put out, 2018, 2019, and theft offenses for the year, we are running at three-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-seventy-five. So although that number's up from last year, it's tracking. But another piece that's important is the clearance rate. The clearance rate in the state of California in 2022 for burglaries was ten percent. Year-to-date, and this is without closing any of our cases, we're at six percent. Theft offenses were at, in the state of California, at, excuse me, six-point-six percent, and we are at five percent in Galt. So there's two examples, it gives you some perspective about where we're at on that. And that's just comparing last year to this year. So where are we at on staff productivity? Calls for service, these are just numbers, but we're at eighty-five-hundred, roughly eighty-six-hundred. We're at ninety-six-hundred, so more calls for service. Our officer-initiated activities went from thirty-nine-hundred to seventy-five-hundred in seven full months. Business checks, building checks, things they do after night, shake the doors or something. In twenty-two, 2022, we're at fifty-two. We're at two-hundred-and-fifty-nine. How are we doing on arresting people and taking them to jail, because at the end of the day, that's our job? Felony arrests in 2022, we're at one-hundred-and-one. In 2023, we're at ninety-nine. Misdemeanor arrests are at two-twenty-seven in 2022. 2023, we're at one-hundred-and-eighty-five. We hear a lot about traffic in the community. I think we heard a little bit about that in the public safety report and on the speed surveys. Our citations, moving citations, year-to-date, we're at two-seventy-two in 2022, three-eighty-two in 2023. Non-moving, these would be equipment violations, one-hundred-and-thirty-five, we're at one-seventy-nine. And then parking citations, we are at three-ninety-two, we're at four-ninety. So that activity for my staff is up because we've pushed the accelerator down on our expectations and the work that needs to get done on a daily basis. My staff continues to do that, and as we've explained to you in some of our emails, we were able to borrow some equipment from the city of Elk Grove for twenty days, nearly three weeks, two ten-day runs, and set those at different places in the community, including the Rayleigh Center, Save Mart, and the Fourth Street Corridor. In addition to that, I've expended overtime dollars and continue to do so with a minimum staffing increase in the overnight hours for our staff. We've moved our pop officer to the graveyard shift. So those are things that we've done internally. We continue to work with our detective unit in ensuring that we are maximizing the use of our time and partnering with our regional agencies on specifically those early burglaries that we had here that we know are linked to a more regional approach. At the end of the day, that doesn't tell you any success stories, but I will remind the council that we've had some success stories, and some of those have been the burglary that was next to the donut shop last October, where blood was left behind and we got DNA. And off that DNA, we got a warrant, and we arrested somebody. Some of these things where we're getting prints, and in many of these cases, we haven't, but in some, we have, that takes time to run it through the county crime lab because, just going to be direct, property crimes fall in last place in the priority level of the way fingerprints and/or DNA is processed. We had success with mail theft cases where we had arrest of two individuals. We actually sent that case to the postal service, and they didn't move on it. We took it back, and we had the DA's office file on that case on our behalf. We have since had more theft because drug users steal mail, and they steal people's identity, and that's how they're able to continue their drug use. So we still get those, but we've had the success. We had some burglaries in some of our senior centers. We took a fingerprint off a box, and actually, somebody we thought was involved with it, now, this took us four or five months, but we got the print hit back. We did a search warrant. We didn't get anything out of that house. We got a code enforcement case, so we put some pressure on them to clean up their property. We weren't able to solve it in form of arrest, but we know who was responsible, and the message was sent. So the staff continues to work diligently on that. And I just urge the council and the community to have some perspective on the litany of things that we're charged to address, and we address the full envelope of all the issues, whether it's parking issues, speeding issues, violent crime issues, and we still have some of those cases open and take extensive amount of time to process, especially when it's dealing with social media and text messaging. And these burglaries that we're talking about here, last night, as I told you, we had a push-out from Rayleigh's of five-hundred dollars in, in property. That's a misdemeanor. In the state of California, since 2011, they changed that threshold. It used to be a felony. We've had those same scenarios occur. We've had an auto burglary where somebody had twenty-five-hundred dollars or their tools taken out of their truck. That's the means for their, making their money and doing their job. And so we take those as seriously as we do those businesses, brick-and-mortar businesses that operate. And this, ultimately, the city manager is correct, we need to still continue to educate the businesses like we educate people about not leaving laptops in cars in plain view where somebody's going to get access to them, or purses or other things. And a lot of these things occurred during the holiday season when people are shopping at commercial areas, but those are the things that we continue to engage in because folks have to harden their, their homes, harden their vehicles, make sure that they don't leave their garage doors open. I've done that myself accidentally, but leave their garage doors open at night, leave their cars unlocked, make sure they have proper lighting, whether it's a business or residential area, and the staff continues to work on that. I stand behind the staff and the hard work they've done. And if and when we need an appropriation from council, we'll come and get that from you. We are working on getting our own camera system. We actually are being donated an old trailer from Elk Grove, and it's not so, really so much been like getting a trailer and getting the equipment. It's the IT infrastructure and the ability to be in the network in Galt that has been a stumbling block for us. It's just the reality of where we're at. But the Real-Time Information Center that we're partnering with in Elk Grove has platforms using the Flock system, actually, as they expand, that give us a platform in the cloud to operate with those camera systems. They have the LPR, the license plate readers, as you know, and they also have a pan tilt and zoom option for that. And so there are other camera platforms that will allow us to do that. I'm taking already encumbered budget numbers under my authority to purchase to make those things happen, and when that project I'm borrowing from moves forward, I'll come back to council for the reappropriation of those funds at that time. So those are the things that we're working internally on and continue to work on. The staff has done a good job. They've met the expectation on getting out to the business checks, using things like our drones, borrowing equipment from other agencies, using the Flock system. But if you have a stolen car and the license plates come back stolen, my leads end pretty quickly, right? Or if you switch the license plate on a vehicle and you're driving, I'm just giving you a hypothetical here, driving a Nissan, but it comes back to a Chrysler, it's clearly not your license plate, right? But we're still picking up that anecdotal information, and we can, staff continues to work on that, my detectives and my patrol officers. For an agency of thirty-eight officers that has six vacancies, two of them are actual openings, but three in the academy and one on a long-term disability, including the command staff and the sergeants, and the fifteen or sixteen or so officers, a including the command staff and the sergeants, and the fifteen or sixteen or so officers assigned to patrol, they've done an incredible job and I appreciate their efforts. I know we've asked them to work overtime. They're going to be forced to work some overtime, they have in the past, and they will continue to do so. And I appreciate their efforts and their vigilance during those times because I know it's an impact on their families and their work weeks when we ask them to stick around longer. But at the end of the day, we will be successful. And, you know, I don't want to make comparisons to other jurisdictions, but this issue is bigger than the city of Galt based on political issues at the state level. And I don't make those as excuses because we'll continue to do what I call God's work and find those responsible for the crimes when we can and where we can and make the arrest. We'll leave those to the judicial branch to address. However, sometimes justice does not go quickly. As you know, on our DUI case where we knew who the responsible person was, it still took us eight months to get that case closed because some of these things do take time. And so with that, I apologize to all the staff here who had no comments tonight and like Amy shaking her head no right now. So I'll get it tomorrow, but I wanted you to hear clearly from me about where we're at and the things that are happening and where crime is and how hard the staff has worked. And submit that to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So Vice Mayor, members of the council, I hope that gives you some context, some information. So if you are approached by citizens, you can at least impart on them some of the, some of the information the chief has provided tonight. Again, we'll be having a business forum, two forums on September thirteenth. Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez will be working with the chamber to have them help us publicize it as well. But meanwhile, we're going to get the word out. We, the information that I'll be presenting on the thirteenth will be similar information to what the chief has already presented. But what we're hoping for is because of the hours of these business forums, that we'll be able to get the business owners who have, who open up in the late mornings, to get them in at eight, between eight and nine PM. And also to get those business owners that may shut down sometime between four and six, to get them in the evening sessions. But we just want to have this conversation with them and hopefully this becomes an ongoing dialogue similar to the cannabis forums that we're having. And while, and so I'll digress a little bit. We also having another cannabis forum on September twentieth. It will be the fourth forum. The last forum that we had earlier in August was attended by roughly thirty-four, thirty-five folks. It was a great discussion. That room, for the most part, was split. And, but to hear the dinner table conversation that went on between both sides of the issue was really satisfying because they listened to each other and I think they understood their positions, it's just that they agreed to disagree. And so I wanted to sort of segue and give you, give you an update on that. But I'll give you more when I come back with a sort of a formal update on our cannabis activities. So you've got information on the burglaries. We've got cannabis, we've got business forum on September thirteenth. I'm going to pass it on to Director Selling, who has some information about some other items.
Yeah, I'll try to be quick. Two things, two, two things that I wanted to remind everybody of. Next Monday, the eleventh, is the skate park forum. It'll be held over at Chabola starting at four-thirty. So just wanted to get that out there. And for anybody that can't attend, there is a survey, you know, you can scan the QR code. I think Amy's got it on the social media and stuff. So for anybody that can't attend, or feel free to do it anyway, even if you're coming too, because there's some pretty technical questions on there about what you want to see in a skate park, what types of skate features. So, so that's one. And then the second project is the good news, bad news, if you will. We are starting construction, also starting next week, on the pickleball courts over at Community Park. So the good news is construction's starting. The bad news is you won't be able to use the tennis courts for probably the next couple of months or so. But the contractor's schedule is to hopefully complete that by the end of October, first part of November, and, and then we should be all open for pickleball. So that's it. Thanks.
Great. We'll probably have the first annual Galt City Council pickleball tournament at some point when those courts are ready. So hopefully the five of you can start getting, getting in shape now. Next up is our illustrious Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman.
Council members, this last week, you found in your boxes a draft environmental impact report for the Lippi Ranch project. That is a project that is working its way through the process. Back in April, we had a scoping meeting for the project. The environmental document really focused on the cultural resources on this property. On September fourteenth, at the Planning Commission meeting next week, we're going to take comments on that draft document. And ultimately, a final EIR will be prepared and it'll work its way through the process, going to the Planning Commission and then ultimately up to the council. But just so everyone knows, it's an opportunity to take comments on the environmental document next Thursday. And if any council members have any questions on what that document is, please feel free to reach out.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. City Council Comment, Kevin Popina.
I have a new item that I'd like us to consider potentially at the next meeting. Shouldn't be too controversial. I received a request from Dan Shockley regarding Ostomy Awareness Day proclamation. And given that we did this last year and he's now received proclamation from Senator Nilo's office, I have sent the proclamation on to the city clerk for us to consider and she'll get that around everybody. And Annette's gone, but I appreciated her bringing up fentanyl awareness. That's something that, you know, has been a concern, a hot-button issue of mine. We discussed it at length at the, in the cast meetings. And I'm pleased to see that they've got, they've got it set and they've got it set with the best-in-the-business presenter. So please get the word out, go there and encourage everybody else to go. And then I did attend the last cannabis forum. And as Lorenzo said, it was about doubled the attendance of the first two. And got a little spicy at times, but in the end, there was, there was good discussion amongst those that didn't storm out of the room. And you could see some, a lot of education going on and some agree to disagree. So I look forward to, to that outreach continuing. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Rachel Lizzano, council member.
Yeah, seems like it's been forever since we were here. I think it's been like three weeks. So lots of events and things that we've been a part of. I wanted to note a couple of things. I was able to attend the Graywall Reef Lane. And again, once again, Police Department did an excellent job putting that together and getting staff out to honor Harmon. Also attended the fundraiser at Back Alley Brewery. It was pretty well-attended. And I'm hoping that that is going to prove the same for the next event in November. And I went to the Supervisor Hume had a Transportation and Roadways meeting out in Harold and addressed some of the roadway issues that their impacts of how the county funds those and how they get out to rural roadways was explained. And so there isn't a lot of money county-wide. They are working on a couple of different funding sources to, to improve the county roadways. And again, that's, I'm talking about the roadways that are outside of the city's jurisdiction, but you and I all drive, and we all drive on them while going to and from home. And so I think it's, he's looking to partner with not only the Sacramento Council of Governments, but Sacramento Transportation Authority, as well as the jurisdictions around here. I think we do a good job of partnering. One example is Cherokee between Quiggle and Twin Cities. I think we worked on that project together and half of it's in the city and half in the county. And so that was really nice to see some folks out for that. And there were some people that live in the county that are right around the city there. It was great to see them. I'm going to leave it with that. There were a lot of, again, a lot of folks out at the Graywall fundraiser and I appreciate everybody and their hard work. And I want to thank the community for coming out tonight and the public comment and all of the staff for the, the hard work that's been going on the last few weeks. So that's all I have.
Thank you, council member. Council Member Sean Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Yeah, I too attended the Graywall Reef Lane, it was very nice. It was good to see the family out there. And I was not able to attend the fundraiser. I was actually at a family birthday party for my father-in-law, but did express to some of the officers that we weren't going to be able to make it. What I want to do is I, I want to take a few minutes to talk about the burglary stuff for a minute. I, first, I want to say I appreciate, appreciate your comments, Chief. I appreciate the data you share with us. And I would say that I have no, no doubt that you and the department are doing everything you can. I spoke with an officer today and, and he expressed to me his frustration with what's happening. You know, everybody's frustrated. Anybody in this town that thinks that the officers themselves are not frustrated with, with what's happening, you know, there's been some very close calls. I think Chief actually told me, you know, one incident where an officer just happened had been by that area just moments prior, just dumb luck really, maybe sometimes. So, I mean, if anybody in the community thinks that they're not, that the police are not frustrated, they are because they, you know, public safety is their duty and they want to, they want to solve this. But with that said, I, I think the problem here is not so much the stats as far as same burglaries this year, last year. The problem is right now is a perception problem. The perception right now is that the community of Galt, from the business owner's standpoint, it's not safe for them. I have probably talked to, I don't know, five or six business owners just this last week, and that was before the ones that happened this weekend, where they've expressed frustration to me. They, I mean, there probably would have been someone here tonight speaking if I hadn't kind of talked them down and reassured them that we were doing, you know, that the PD and city leadership's doing everything we can. But the perception here is that, that, that we're not. And so what, if we, if we are doing everything we are, which I believe we are, but their perception is that we're not, then the problem is the communication. I mean, we are not doing a good, we are not doing a good job communicating that to the public. I mean, we've had how many robberies? I don't know about other council members, but I think I'm probably maybe the only person of, of any city leadership that maybe has visited and knows disrespecting the council because some of you may have. But, you know, I've visited probably half these businesses that have been robbed. The one on Lincoln Way just last week, this guy's mom-and-pop business sells ice cream and things. He was telling me how nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars to replace the glass. Nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I'm looking around thinking, how much is he going to have to sell to replace nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars? These businesses are just, there's no, whether they're stealing anything or not, there's no dollar value can be put on the optics of not feeling safe in your business. He said to me, he said, "I just want to be able to come back to my business the next day and know that it's going to be the way it was when I left it." That's what he said to me. I know there's been some outreach with PD in the chamber, I appreciate all that. I know that Mr. Heinz has discussed a forum coming up on the thirteenth. But I think the problem with the message that's coming off, and this is the way I feel, and I've felt this, that some business owners have echoed this as well, is, is we're like, well, you need, this is what you need to be doing. You need to be, you know, no, don't leave your cashier door, don't, you know, leave the lights on, this and that, and all these, all these educational things. But it's like, what we're saying to the public is, we're saying, you know, this is what you should be doing to avoid being robbed. You know, Mr. Farmer, you and your wife in your coffee shop, well, this is what you need to be doing to keep your windows from being smashed out. Now, my windows are six-thousand dollars apiece because they're old, historic, funky sizes and stuff. So, I mean, you know, then you have a logo on the glass. I mean, so they break it out, maybe they don't get anything because we don't leave cash in there. We leave lights on, we have security cameras and all that. But all the education in the world is not going to keep some guy from just thinking he wants to smash it out and go in there and look around. These people feel that we're saying that it's your fault that you're getting robbed because you're, because you, you shouldn't have left that cash in the back room or you should have let, you know, you shouldn't have left the key in your register. And obviously, those are very things that people shouldn't do. But what I don't hear is what the city's doing. We're only saying, this is what you business owners should be doing. I mean, if my kid was being bullied at high school and I went to the principal and said my kid's being beat up in, in the hallway, I wouldn't expect the principal to say, "Well, you know, maybe you should get your son karate lessons. Or maybe you shouldn't be carrying his milk money in his pocket. Or maybe you should avoid going around at their kids and he won't get bullied." No, that's not what they would say. It doesn't make these people feel any better to say that you need to be better job to harden here. When I opened my coffee shop and the location we're at right now, there was bars on the window. We removed those bars because I was like, I don't want the optics that we're going to close cages at night. And I don't feel like we live in a town where I have to do that. And so we took them off. Maybe you should put them back on now. I keep hearing, you know, well, this is happening everywhere. And I know that the, that the criminal justice system in this, in this state sucks. Prop forty-seven, everything, we can go on and on about that. It's frustrating to be in law enforcement, I wouldn't want their job. It, it's just, it's like you're swimming against a strong current. But with that said, I, I keep hearing this, well, it's happening everywhere. We've, I've gotten some emails from you, Mr. Heinz, as a matter of fact. I get an email that said, "Well, you know, this is happening everywhere." Well, I don't live everywhere, I live in Galt. And the people that are opening these businesses here, they opened them in Galt for a reason. I don't care what happens in Stockton, I don't care what happens in Lodi, I care what happens in Galt. And for us to just start accepting that that's the new normal, it's not acceptable because we become numb and we become complacent, like, well, it's just happening everywhere. Well, there's a lot of homeless, but that's happening everywhere. And when we start saying that and we start being dismissive, then that's when things start to change. We have to be vigilant, we have to work harder. What I'm asking for is I just need, moving forward, we need to be very, much better at communication. I mean, I can tell you, I probably wouldn't have had any business owners come to me if, in the last several months, if we had been good about being on social media from the city side, saying, "Last night, we had some burglaries, I'm sure you've heard about it, but I want to reassure the stat, the public that we are doing everything we can. We can't disclose what we're doing or our tactics, but I want to reassure you." Or, "Here's a statement from our city manager." And then, you know, "Citizens of Galt, my name is Mr. Heinz, I'm your city manager and may or not have met me, but here's what we, I want to reassure you." People need reassurance, they want to be mailed, they want to be reassured that we are doing what we are. Because if we are, then we need to be telling them that because they don't feel that way right now. And so I just ask that we be more transparent moving forward, keep people updated, let people know that we're taking this seriously, let people know that, yes, we are working hard on this and that our PD is doing everything we can and we share your frustration. We're not doing that, we've done it once only because I made a fuss about it and then we came out with a public statement. But I hate being, you know, reactive, we need to be proactive. And so, you know, I appreciate any effort we can do moving forward. I appreciate PD's efforts, I share their frustration, obviously, but it's just not the kind of community that I feel like Galt should be. And I, and I failed to accept that and say that it's okay because of the, the crime stats being what they were last year. So I'd love to talk about other things besides that, like to talk about the Galt Festivals coming up in eighteen days, but I think that is obviously a bigger issue and so I'm not going to talk anybody about that. And that's the end of my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Farmer, I would say that the communication starts and ends with me regarding public safety. So all the dialogue that you've had through the city manager are my words that he's used. And I've been directed to share it to all the council members at the same time in the same place so they could share it on social media. If we need to be telling people more regularly that we had burglaries, we can. But what happens is you saturate that and we are focusing on ten or twelve burglaries, I'm telling you. Not, you know, call wolf. There's a lot of criminal activity that goes on in the city of Galt on the regular. And so I can't keep up with that pace, my staff can't keep up with that pace. My staff can't keep up with that pace of simply putting things on social media so people are aware. And that's why we participated in and called for an additional meeting next week on this very topic for those specific stakeholders. And I thought that was the venue that would be the best vehicle to get the attention of those people involved. And it's not anybody's fault, but when you're, consider what crooks consider a target-rich environment, whether it's catalytic converters under your car or mail in community mailboxes because your community has a lot of community mailboxes based on when your community was developed, those are the things that those folks look for. And so all we're trying to do is get them to get the message that it's not a target-rich environment. And not every business you go into, you're going to get 500 or 1,000 bucks out of the cash register. So there are behaviors that we have to change and harden those facilities. So while I understand what you're saying and I'm committed to the safety of the community, it ultimately rests with me. So. Hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just have to cut off the dialogue.
Fair enough.
You gave your comment, you gave your comment. We have to agendize this if we want to get back and forth. I'm, I'm gonna have to.
Well, then I don't have to be, to be agendized because, you know, I'm tired of waiting for months to talk about it amongst my fellow peers. I mean, I'm getting emails back and forth from the city manager. All I do is do damage control on, on Facebook about this topic. Councilmember, Councilmember Farmer, you have one minute to wrap up. Make your comment.
No, I won't even take a minute. If we, I just want to see change or I'm going to ask for this agenda. I'm not. Going to wait for the next council meeting to come back and ask for this to be talked about. We need to do better, Mr. Heinz. You need to do better. You need to be reaching out to the community better personally. I don't care if it's you walking into a business and saying, sir, I'm Mr. Heinz, nice to meet you, you may have never met me, you've probably never been to a council meeting. There's probably not even a single business owner in this audience. So all the information we shared tonight probably isn't getting shared with anybody. But if you can come and say, here's my card, I want to let you know that we're doing the best we can. But no, it's me doing that. It's me on social media. And I'm just frustrated about it.
Thank you, council member. The last one, I thank you for all the staff giving us a good report, your hard work. I also like to thank you all the public comment. There is a lot of public comment tonight and every public comment is worth to me. I really look at these public comment, what the best we can do for these citizens. That's our job, that's my job. And I also like to thank you, our community member, they don't make the public comment but they, they are here in this chamber. I like to thank you for the media, they are here for a whole time. There is a few events I attend. I attend the last Saturday market of the season, this past weekend. The weather was nice, cool, and another great turnout. I look forward to hearing back from the Park and Recreation Department about the season. I attended the wreath laying ceremony of Officer Garibal's second anniversary. I also attended the fundraising event at Back Alley that evening. It was great to see all the community support. I also attended Galt University first meeting. It was good, a lot of information, good for the. And the last, I want to touch bases a little bit about Sean Farmer and Chief Kalanowski. You know, I, I do understand the community or business owner need to be, need to be, give them a guide, what is the less effect. But there is certain things is easy to say, but is hard to, I'm, I'm just, is, is hard to control. When you're running a business, at the end of your shift, if there is no cash, how are you going to take the cash at home? You are one working. If you're going to, at the last time when you close your business, you can hand you otherwise, you can have the robbery in front of your store. And this is my experience. It is very hard, where they can hide. It is, it is hard, but they need to be do it. And same thing, sometimes we said there is a damage only 250 or 300 or 500. As a business owner, this is not the monetary damage, this is the mentally damage. If any of your business, small business, this thing happen, what can happen next day? All you are implies, can I ask, what happened? I don't want to work there. This is unsafe. And you have very hard time to retain the employee. And same thing, if any business, I, I bet you have any business owner, if there's a robbery or burglary happened last night, that person don't want to go on their business. So I, I do understand, we, everybody need to be best what we can do. Thank you for the chief and his staff doing the best. Thank you for a city manager give us information, but we need to, what we can do, what we can at least, same burglary in the same place and same area this week, next week, next week. And unfortunately, you know, the crime rate increase not just Galt, everywhere. And we just need to be more visual, what the best we can do for all together. What you guys need help from the whole council or as my personal, what we can satisfy these small businesses. This forum, hopefully, you know, you guys can explain to the small business owner how they can be a safe. And that's all. Anybody have any comment, any council member or public? If there's no comment, I would like to adjourn that meeting, 9 o'clock. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice, good night.